All the main order Lisa.
As required by the meetings actually seventy-five, I think notices only when provided on January eleventh, two thousand twenty-four by providing. By publication notice, the express times and a hundred county Democrat and by first thing have noticed this is building on the same date. Mayor Barsoni.
Here.
Mister Baylor.
Here.
Mister Bean.
Here.
Mister Bennett.
Here.
Mister McDermott.
Here.
Mister Libery.
Here.
And Mister Penelope was accused.
Stand for flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to the very bottom of what we stand as one nation under God, indivisible, and liberty that stands before us.
Okay. Looking for a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from April eighteenth. Anybody will make a motion?
I'll make that one.
Go in a second. I'll second. Any questions, comments, directions, violations? Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni.
Oh, before then.
So we're not doing anything with the budget then?
Can I? Oh, we're gonna introduce it.
Okay.
Well, let's talk about it. We'll get to the budget.
Oh, okay. I thought we always started with this budget first, but that's.
Oh, okay. I did forget about that.
Yeah.
We did, sorry.
Yeah.
Neither of them. Let's let's take the vote on this and we got that first thing done.
Okay.
I forgot about that.
Uh, Mayor Barsoni.
Yes.
Mister Baylor.
Yes.
Mister Bean.
Yes.
Mister Bennett.
Yes.
Mister McDermott.
I was thinking we're I was gonna bring it up. For the introduction there we do. But we could have.
And that's that's.
So we don't have to discuss. Uh, the salary increases. I still have questions on a few items. My. So they built into this. Packet. Data sheet, a three percent increase. I'd like to know where everybody stands on the three percent increase.
Well, I checked with Andrew today. About that. We don't have to. Award. If we introduce the budget. With the three percent doesn't mean that's what the raise you had to get. Even he still can talk about that unless you want to take out what that three percent is, but. I think we ought to just leave it. We're gonna be three, one, zero, whatever you want, whatever we decide.
So you can go back.
So you have a buffer. Okay, you know, so that's my opinion, but that's just mine. But Andrew said you can do that. And, uh. And I I thought it would be somebody some other adjustments. So any other salaries and wages, he said. Doesn't matter what it is. You can budget for it. It doesn't mean you have to spend the gap to award.
Okay.
But if you want to discuss it now, get over with us. Talk about it. If you don't want to include it in the budget at all.
Okay, well, I I'm gonna repeat what I said the last time when we discussed it. So I had thought we already decided. And I very heavily thought about. What you said, what people think. But. I believe that employees. We have very few employees. They are part-time employees. Everybody has been affected by all. The increases everywhere, not that. I. I personally got a two percent and I worked way harder than that. That two percent was more like an insult. I'm okay with the three percent because I feel. We're kind of showing our employees that. We do appreciate the job that they do. I realize that. It takes a hit on the township, the taxpayers, but I don't think it's that much that. I'm in, I'm still in favor of the three percent. Sorry. Who's next?
And I'll add into that too. I I think I, um. I mean, especially when you see statistically data out there that says it's costing the average family eleven thousand dollars more a year. To food, fuel, oil, all that good kind of stuff. Um. You know, three percent doesn't even begin to to dent that, but. Uh, I still feel that. I think for the most part, everybody's doing a good job and and needs to be. I don't want to say rewarded. I I don't know that it's a reward. It's just. You know, a part of the increment system of. You know, getting paid what your your net worth is. So I'm on board with three.
Brian, Lou.
We didn't burn. Well, I I guess I I'd be one of the minorities. I I I have to look at it. Um. I just know, you know. I just want to look at it right. I got a one point six, so eventually we we keep adding, adding, adding. It does add up in the end. I'm not disagreeing with. Three. I just want to look at the numbers one more time.
If we agree to three across the board or up to three is every can we say this person gets this? This person gets. Two and a half. Two. This one gets three. Can we do that, Michael?
You can't. You could do it with people other than your statutory officers. So with statutory officers, whatever everybody else gets, you gotta give them. So let's say you gave three to. Well, you gotta give. That highest thing to clerk CFO down the line. You can't. You don't have to, but then you have to pass a resolution saying why you gave them less than everybody else. And then it's just like a roadmap to. Get sued.
Right, right. Well, you know, every year, this is my third budget since I've been back. And, uh. You know. I'm like, let's cut a percent. And I know Bob, you're saying it's really not gonna. Back the old law tax, but. Three grand this year, three grand next year, and the following year it can eventually add up. You know. So, uh.
Right, three, three thousand or three thousand and ninety.
Right.
Thousand.
Now, and now this year is six thousand, you know, three thousand.
It's not six thousand.
What I'm saying is every year.
Three percent of three thousand is ninety bucks.
Right. But what I'm saying is every year we're adding more and more, so I'm not in favor of it and, you know, but. I would not be voting for a three percent price.
Well, Brian, it seems like he want. We could introduce the budget with the three percent. He can look at the numbers. We can talk about it next meeting. We're not the worst. Anything tonight.
Yeah, let's let's just keep going with what we were doing.
So under municipal.
Well, we're gonna introduce, we're gonna introduce the budget with the three percent. And so with next month, if we. Approve it.
Yeah.
And you don't give the three percent, you're just gonna have a little buffer in your budget.
Yep.
Right. Three thousand dollars.
So a couple other items. Uh. We're going other expenses for municipal clerk went from twenty-seven hundred to forty-nine hundred. So. I need an explanation on that one.
What was that one?
On page twelve.
Yeah.
Under municipal clerk, other expenses, jump from a twenty-two hundred dollar jump from twenty-seven hundred to forty-nine.
Oh, in there. I don't want to cover my head, but I can look that up. So I didn't try and do my documents. Shannon, I what would you have to do to go back and?
I just have to pull up the spreadsheet to see if I. And for the state that I love.
Another line item.
Honestly, Bill, that could be. Hostage, or I just couldn't couldn't even tell you. We'd have to pull it.
Um. Other expenses for tax assessment went from sixty-one fifty-eight to ten thousand. What are we anticipating? In two thousand twenty four. For almost a four thousand dollar increase.
Did we budget for that company she wanted to retain to do?
BRT, um.
I didn't think we had to pay anything upfront on that. But did we put money here just in case we use them?
For you're right. Oh, that's the, um. The new BRT and vital under. No, but he's talking about the, um. Taxicab people, the taxi. Whose name I can't retain.
Yeah.
I can't recall. Yeah.
Alright, so we'll get an explanation on that. What page was that one on, Bill?
Thirteen.
Third.
There you are.
On the bottom at thirteen, council of a four will housing COA stipend of twenty-five twenty-five. I asked for a job description and there's none. I like to strike that from the budget. You know, we paid this firm of Lum, Drasco and. Sidon or whatever it is. Every month I'm seeing. You know, this this month is sixty-one hundred and thirty-six dollars. You know. That's coming out of COA trust, so.
That's for the condemnation for sure. That's the law for handing a condemnation for sure. Yes.
Well. That is. So why is it under COA?
Cause that's for that. That's the sewer that's gonna go to the eight of the COA project.
Okay.
Yeah, they they need it for that. I forget which one it is, but.
The one over on, uh.
Uh, Voorhees. Yeah, Voorhees Road.
Okay, okay. Um. So. We don't have any job description for. The liaison, whatever the title is. You know, so why are we paying twenty-five hundred dollars a month?
Sign off.
I mean, excuse me, yeah, yeah.
Listen, can you?
Uh, well, there's even actually part of this in my report tonight that I handle all the. Uh, past mortgages for the, um. The trust fund. Uh, what do they call them? Mortgages that the township held. Uh, so I do those and I work with CGPNH on. Uh, the annual reporting. We just actually got a notification from them today that. The state is gonna require additional reporting coming up in a year, so we are gonna schedule a meeting for next week. Um. You know, field all the phone calls and. Hand out all the information how people can apply and what they need to do. Uh, there's several drawers in there full of mortgages and applications and.
Okay, so that's good to know, cause I mean, you know. No job description, you know, why we paying? I have no problem, uh, with paying that stipend for what you're doing there, but. We hit a job description, so.
When I started, I think there were no job descriptions. We now have a book full, so I'll spare it with you and I'm happy.
No, no, just come up with a word document that this is what, you know. And then I would hope that that twenty-five hundred, I know Bob, it's not a lot of money, comes out of the COA trust fund money and not out of our general. Uh, appropriations. So that would be a question, I think. What's that?
I would say it's because.
I believe that comes out of the COA.
Shannon does it? Yeah, okay, so it's already.
Okay.
Yes, it does.
Yeah. Let's see what else. Page fourteen. Why the decrease? Through the A to the rescue squad. About thirty-five hundred dollars.
Insurance, well done.
Their insurance, what that? Okay.
Yeah, as I recall, that that went up the year before, right, Paul? And then you got to made some changes to get it back down?
Yep.
Ambulance.
Uh, page fifteen. Number works. We're going from two seventy-seven one hundred to three oh four. That's a ten percent increase. In salaries and wages. So what was, do we hire somebody else? I mean, make somebody full-time from part-time, you know?
No, but that two seventy-seven doesn't reflect like we. So open space reimburse that line item. For the work that the guys do.
Okay.
So depending on how much money was. Reimbursed, it doesn't reflect in his line. So if there's thirty thousand dollars that was re reimbursed from open space.
Okay.
Then that line really would have spent three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
So.
And actually, that number somewhere is around. Just forty-four or forty, it was forty-three thousand. Forty-three thousand. So that two seventy-seven is really three, ten plus.
Yeah, so that three oh four says it in there, but I can't anticipate open space.
Right.
Reversing.
But I thought we didn't include another person.
Well, in the in the new budget, yeah. But again, he's coming from. Open space. The differential.
Okay. Well. I guess my point is regardless of where my stuff from, you we are increasing by one person in that department.
Right. Well, thirteen in man hours and health insurance. You know, it's barely. Yeah, one person, but right. Uh, that is all I have on this, but I I do have some issues. I like to talk about police overtime, and I don't know if we need to do that in executive segment. So.
You turn, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. On a side note. On NJ, uh, dot com. They were listing the most expensive, uh, towns with property taxes. And like in deal. The average home is worth four point seven million. They don't pay twenty-one thousand in property taxes. Now, I'm sure there's the, you know. There's not a lot of school kids there, but I'm looking at these, the whole twenty of them. I'm like, wow. Here's a house worth two point nine million, only paying three point seven. I bet you would like that.
I would like that.
Yeah. So.
But you can't come in and get half-assed numbers. What's in their town? Is there a pharmaceutical giant that owns half the town that's paying a billion dollars in taxes?
Well, no. Deal, you know, is is is, uh.
Wealthy community.
Uh, Spring Lake, that's only homes, okay? And usually summer homes is, uh, you know. Irish Riviera, you know, they're at two point nine on the average with fourteen thousand. I just thought it was interesting.
Okay. So what are we doing with the budget? We're gonna introduce it as is?
Sure.
And you know what I discussed next time after you look at the numbers?
Yeah. For the.
What? Do you want explanations on the things you asked for? What do we?
No, I think I'm I'm good on the explanation. The, um, maybe that one. On page twelve or whatever was, um. And I won't need that tonight in order to vote on. Introducing. Um. So what percentage are we looking at? The school district is at two percent.
What you're talking about races?
Yeah, stood for the, no, no, I'm talking about race. Based on.
Oh, what are percentage?
Yeah, what percentage are the taxpayers gonna get hit with?
I think it's in your meeting minutes from last.
One. Three point seven?
Hmm.
I thought he told us that.
He summarized that. At the end.
Three point six, three point seven, something like that.
Yes, why we need answers here? He has that.
All right. Think it was in last month's meeting, Lisa?
Yeah.
But I'm looking at. No, there's nothing in the minutes. From April eighteenth saying what percentage would be, uh.
Yeah, so I think what I entered, the average taxpayer is seeing an increase of a hundred and twenty-seven dollars per year or forty-seven dollars per a hundred thousand assessed value. I go, I didn't, I don't have a sense now.
That's that's about six cents.
What was it for one hundred?
Um, forty-seven dollars, I believe.
Oh, for a hundred thousand, yeah.
Okay, for the average. Homeowner?
Uh, when he broke it down.
I was gonna say, that's, that's, okay.
Yeah. And that was including the SRO.
Right.
So since we went to that. Are we ready then? Should we do? Should we introduce? The budget at this point, might as well. We talked about it. Are you ready to introduce it or what do you want to do?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we want to make a motion to?
I'll make that motion.
Um, Bob, before we enter, we have to do the COLA introduction.
Oh, has that go first?
Got it, right. Yeah.
I'll make a motion. We introduce orders number one oh five twenty twenty-three to COLA orders. Everybody want a second?
Second.
Anybody have any questions, comments, discussions on that? We have to do, we'd have to do self-exam resolution first, though, right?
I don't think that one matters. Sorry.
Okay.
There's a good order.
Now. I'm looking for the motion against the introduction to the budget.
I'll make the motion.
Hold you second.
Okay, sure.
Any other further questions, comments, discussions? Any stipulations on it? Want to what you know, anything like that? Okay. Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Bennett?
Yes.
Yes.
And then let's get it all out of the way. I'll make the motion. We introduce a resolution, adopt a resolution fifty twenty-four, self-exam resolution recommended by the auditor.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments, discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Yes. We got everything out of the way for that, right? Okay, go back to you. Did number one, but there were two treasures report. May bill list and interim bill list. Anybody want to make a motion to accept this?
I'll make the motions.
Give me one second. Sorry. Any questions, comments?
No, I got things I want to look at, but like if Shannon will listen, I'll look at, look at it later. Uh, but I would like to go back to the three signatures that are needed. The mayor. This was done back in two thousand and six when I first served on the town council. I. Don't know when it dropped to only. One committee person and one. And and the mayor signature. So I like the thoughts of the other committee members on that.
I'm fine with it, but if it's, I'm just worried about if it ties it anything up. Like if I get here a week later. Who's got, you know what I mean? Who's gonna sign it? But that's, that's my only concern. Like say I have to sign it for you.
I think it's anybody who's.
Yeah, no. Doesn't matter. I got to hear it signed anyway.
Right, right. Yeah, anybody can sign, yeah.
Oh, no, no, for him it will matter. Like who? I'm only one.
Yeah.
You want three?
To say you're waiting for me to sign something. Is it gonna be in a box where any of us come in and look at it and sign it?
Yeah, well, I mean, it worked twenty years ago. I don't.
I so I'm ask because I've never dealt with it.
I don't know why, you know, why we dropped the signature.
So instead of the folder, is it?
We had stacks here and I didn't like it because. It was there at the night.
Didn't work so well when I first got on because we're paying insurance claims under insurance. Health insurance.
Let's don't go there and that's executive.
Well, no, that's no, I'm gonna go there.
Yeah.
Because you're making it sound like, oh, we would relax things. Well, obviously didn't work then.
I think I was the one that brought that out that, you know, you sign something that on, uh.
It was slated under state something else, but yeah.
Right, right, right.
You're right, but but I mean, the point is, but I have no problem doing that. Would make a motion, I guess, what you're gonna do.
Well, we have a, we have a motion on. We gotta finish your motion first. Did Paul, any comment from you?
No, I I I, you've heard me say many times, I like as many eyes on the. Uh, purchase orders the as we can, so.
I'm glad. I think you gotta make. I I hate to do this to you. I think you gotta make it that everybody's gotta be here once a week to sign. You gotta make time to come. I'm I'm gonna have to come every week and sign them. I I come. Sign them anyway. Well, Lisa tells me is enough, but.
I can't sign them to set one.
So. Uh, I think, well, let's let's do the vote on this motion.
Right.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Um, yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yes.
Mister Ford.
Yes.
And I think if you're, somebody's gonna make a motion, I think the motion should be. That each member is required to come to the building at least once a week and sign purchase orders.
It.
Well, I'll make that.
Would that be Shannon is once a week too much, once every two weeks or?
Yeah, once a week is a little too much. I mean, we only do an intern business and a regular business.
Yeah, right. So every two weeks?
Yeah, I mean, you can come right after the intern business is done and you can come right after the.
So well. When you send out the interim bill list, why you send out the email to everyone?
Right.
Is come and sign your P O's.
Okay.
Right.
Okay.
You want me to separate or you just want them in one pile?
Put them in one pile.
One pile.
Doesn't matter to me.
It works easier for me if it's your one pile.
That's how it was years ago. So I'll make that motion.
Yeah, but wait a minute. But wait, it that would be, you have to have them separated because she's in charge of the offices. He's got DPW.
Right.
So you gotta break it down by.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
He's gonna sign all the records.
Break it down into the liaison and then, you know. But everybody can come in and review them in the different folders. Right.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I don't for anybody.
Right.
Okay, so that's the motion. Anybody want a second? We said two weeks, every two weeks.
I'll I'll second it.
Any further questions, comments? Roll call.
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yes.
Mister Ford. Yes.
Looking for a motion to accept the tax collector's tax assessor report.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, anybody anything to pull, discussion, roll call?
Mayor Barsoni?
Yes.
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Bennett?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
Police Department report. Chief, you have anything you want to add? Is the big reporting up?
No.
You have nothing to add? Anybody have any questions? EPW, Jeff?
Um, yeah. Yeah, the the call volume, you know, really. Dropped. From the previous year for the month of April. I was just, uh, that that's a good thing. You know?
Uh, we, uh, we were tied up with, uh, H L T add to the Port Sex crimes. Um. Which were from March carryover those investigation. Hold officer off the, uh. Self-initiated activity. To focus on those crimes.
And I have to be honest, I'm surprised the truck stops and truck summits went down from April from March.
Yeah, and that would that would be a lot of the two, um. Officer for, you know, some of them were taken off of. Unfortunately, some truck posts to do some brand activity work and then also produce those. Sex crimes investigation.
I would love to see the mayor get in touch with Warren County again about. Why we can't get more signage or something. They just don't. Care. These truckers. Mega. That's probably not you.
I could ask. I mean, they have them up. I mean. I'm the opinion now that I don't care many put up.
All right.
I got the order yesterday working and. In a matter of two hours, ten or twelve months.
I got two of them there.
That's it.
Thank you.
It's funny because I. You could tell us, some of them are going slow to creep it like they don't want to even be noticed, like they're trying to sneak through. And others are just. They're going like. They're not speeding. I mean, the truck looks like it's, it's probably going thirty or thirty-five on the street. And you can tell they just don't even care.
I I I do have to say I don't understand. With the GPS here is because one of the trucks that I stopped yesterday left, uh. Industrial drive. Maybe left. Drove down through five nineteen, all the way down to Warren Glen, all the way. Um, past your street, all the way up one seventy-three to get to seven gates, just making the red out of industrial.
Yeah, and I tell you, once that's done, I think you're gonna have to increase traffic on Still, Still Valley Road, which is our problem. Voorhees Road is gonna have traffic. Because Alpha did the same thing as Lopec then. When you're coming out on the edge road, it says no left turn. So the truck comes out, he's gonna go right on that road down to Still Valley and then comes out Voorhees, so.
Well, maybe chief and, and we'll have to see as they finish that new intersection over there in industrial. Maybe it'll be assigned, put up there, seventy-eight to the right. Regardless of what that GPS says.
I still don't understand, Mike, why these towns could put up no lefts, no lefts in their town, yet we want to make something one way. We can't do it.
Yeah, why not?
The only thing I can figure is, are those town municipal roads or county roads?
All municipal.
Yeah. You know, they could, the planning board, planning or zoning board can put that restriction on them.
Yes, well, but it has to be retained by the municipality then.
Right, yeah.
So.
Why can't?
Why can't we put?
Well, because. The problem is the statutes, if the, if the road that you're looking to do terminates on a county road or a state road, it's a whole another set of.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
So you gotta get there.
Our problem is we have so many county roads, everything.
Right, so it's, yeah, so that's a problem. If it was just purely a municipal road that intersected with another municipal road, you could pretty much do what you want.
Yeah, okay, I got that.
So chief, do you have a new grant writer? Did you reassign somebody to help you write grants?
I, no, I, I bought, I took one of my officers off the road to open a grant, yes.
So, I sent an email out on April twenty-fifth that I got from Senator Congressman Kane's office on a community project funding application information. And that was a Thursday and the response from municipality had to be in by five P M on that Wednesday, so literally six days.
That's what I took off.
What's that?
That, that's the grant that I took them off the road.
To work on that grant?
However, I think the Chinese saying grant that we already sent correspondence out on for help with the building. Um, so I guess we'll find out.
Right. Yeah, I'm looking at the, the information that they, it's very general and I don't know how further in depth they're gonna go once they say, yeah, we're gonna help out bring it or something, so. You know, but they didn't give you much time to respond to it, you know, less than a week. Literally. So. We shall see. Always six days, yeah. Probably one time soon.
They don't want to give it to.
Joe, you have anything to add to your report?
Yeah, only one thing. I missed one thing. Um, April eighth, the mayor go around at Thomas Stewart Park, the warranty job to replace that center shop from the paint being, uh, chipped off was replaced. That was it.
I was gonna ask, I saw them up there working on it, yeah.
Yes, yeah, that was April eighth. They took about day and a half to do that job.
Joe, just want to let you know, uh, Mister Bagley from Baby's Road dropped off a thank you letter, uh, card here. Boy is, uh, telling me to thank you for the great job you did. He's very appreciative of it. He said it was done very neatly, nicely, picked out nice sized stones and everything. He's very pleased with it. And two, thanks for the quick response to the guy on Gary Road over the drainage ditch when you, he sent that, the email and so. But, uh, yeah, Mister Bagley was extremely happy, so.
Joe, did you ever get the bill for the paving and the slurry you had?
Yes, I have it. I have an invoice all made out, uh, that I can forward to, you know, forward to the school.
Okay, yeah, just see, see me on that, uh, email.
Okay.
Thanks, Joe.
Anybody else? Hey, Lisa, you have anything to add to your report other than no less sign we don't have to discuss tonight? Anything else you wanted to add?
Uh, just if we wanna entertain, um, the additional resolution, uh, for the person-to-person transfer. This is on the added one, Bob, and then, um, the request for the waiver.
Oh, I, I think we should talk about that and discuss and executive of the attorney before we do that. Because Rich, have you had a chance to talk to Mike at all about that yet?
Sorry.
The liquor license transfer.
No, it came through to me today.
I think, I think something we should talk, the legal first before we act. Okay.
So then just the waiver of the fee if you guys are so inclined for the Girl Scout Trooping at ninety-two.
I'll make a motion. We waived the fee for Girl Scouts to use the pavilion on Thomas Stewart Park on June first at ten A M and then maybe one second.
Say.
Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor?
Bye. I just want to think on Lisa's report, the finance offensive system, I'm still waiting to hear from D C A. Last Friday, he told me it should be arriving shortly, so, uh, I'll follow up tomorrow again with them. See, hey, something, we'd stand by and, you know.
In a race.
Okay.
Zoning code enforcement report? Paul, you have anything to add?
Yeah, no, I don't. Uh, I'm, I mean, this report's pretty self-explanatory, um, but on a positive note, I, I can't say for sure. And I, I believe Jeff was in court today for Drake's. Um, but it appears to me that their white flag is up. They put the property up for sale. Um, so I'm thinking the problem is fixed itself.
I still disappointed in the court.
Oh, absolutely.
Another ninety days.
Right, absolutely.
It took like almost nine months of the connections they gave.
No, absolutely.
I mean, it's, um, but.
Very, very disappointed. Very disappointed, but I do think the problem is gonna go away. And everything else on here is pretty much okay, is.
Okay, anybody have any questions to that? Court reports. Paul, we have any to add on that?
Uh, no, we don't.
Everybody have any questions on it?
You know, other than we're gonna be adding to that again this year.
Absolutely. And A C O report.
Lisa, did she ever get back to about the, if we know if they were licensed or not?
I asked her again. I, I emailed her maybe Monday and asked her if she received the police report and her response was that she has requested a copy again, so I'll file. Yeah. So, no.
Anybody else? Any other questions on those agenda items? Looking for a motion to accept the police department report, D P W report, township report, zoning enforcement report, court report, A C O report.
I make the motion.
Oh, uh, roll call?
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenny?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
Committee report. So, wait, you have anything that?
The only thing was that the, um, the staff is wondering if we are going to have a community day or not. I'm not really sure other than that they want to put up a table.
We had, they said.
I think we already said it, right?
Last year.
We include money in the budget for it.
I thought we didn't, so that's why we.
I mean, if the thousand dollars is still in there, but that, yeah, obviously never covers it. It's a lot of fundraising efforts and ad sales and donations.
What, what do they want to do?
They just.
Just wanna know if we're gonna have it?
Yeah, that's all. They're not.
Anybody who wants to. Is he correct? Do you want to run it or anything?
Yeah, I think Booster and Rocket. Handle that, yeah. I mean. Lisa does a lot, that's, I know there's a lot, but we can scale it down. Yeah. Lisa, you still have to, to help if, uh, Rocket, Booster to help out. I know you do most of the heavy lifting with that.
They do Brian tour.
We, we can scale it down. We, even without, uh, I mean, we can.
I don't know that we can scale it down much more. I mean, we, you know, we haven't hired any of the vendors to come out with the.
It would have to be, we could just say you're donating your time, right?
I feel a little weird canceling, so we're, we're it's, it's an interesting problem this year because we had to cancel last year due to weather. So all those people already submitted their ads. They already paid the money. Nobody requested it back. So any, it'd be nice to do something.
Yeah.
Know where the thousand dollars is from? The ads that you sold last year.
I usually, no, don't I usually raise like three thousand dollars and it's painful, but yeah. So I, I don't know, but it would seem to me it would be a shame to not do anything, um, okay. It's, but I don't know how we fund it.
Yes, so the answer is yes. You want to wait until next month or what?
No, I, I'm, yes, I do think we're just gonna have to fundraise. I, I mean, I can call around as well.
Okay.
How much do you think we need a fundraise?
Like I said, if I had to guess, I would say that I probably can generate around three thousand a year. And then we always had like the thousand dollars in there. We always end up having some holdover from that that we also use for, you know, the Christmas and whatever. So I don't know, Brian, twenty, two thousand dollars maybe?
Okay.
Okay.
What's actually in the kitty from last year from some of the ads that's carrying over?
Well, is that in a trust that it would carry over in that celebration line?
Yeah, I would just have to pull.
We'll have to look.
Yeah.
So there's already a little.
There is plenty in there, yeah.
Yeah, I would think that we could do something similar, um, hopefully with what we have, um. This year, we have, you know, really been hoping that we could bring in one of those vendors. I think, Bob, you even had information on a new one, right, with like another inflatable or, you know, more activities for kids. I think so.
Believe you missed a pound, yes.
So we had hoped to do that. I don't know if we can or not, but like I said, people already paid last year. They were gracious and didn't ask for the money back, so hopefully we can thank them this year. Okay.
Yeah, I don't see that being a problem getting two thousand. I'll ask Brett, too. I mean, there's two camps in the summer that they're gonna get money from. Uh, maybe that could cover two thousand.
I mean, Booster always sponsors one of our events.
Booster.
Um, they're generous with that.
Booster's really doing a lot for us.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, they usually, um, pay for the gentleman who comes with the exotic animals and it's like three hundred and sixty dollars or something and it all helps.
Anything else, Lee?
Nope, that was it.
Bill?
Open space. So we did discuss about the memorial benches. And they want them over here at the Reinhardt Park. They don't want them. Yeah, they want to put them up there. It's a lot of work, you know, the more we're getting, it's more work for Joe and his team, so. Uh, farm leases, we can discuss, uh, their opinion, but I like to do that in a second session. Uh, there was some talk, but I don't think it went anywhere about, um, pickleball court. You know, then the lights, we call it basketball lights.
Lights I'd like to discuss.
And, uh, obviously there was a third item. I forget what it was. I don't know if it was tennis courts, but, you know. Some of those are pretty big items to fund, so.
Well, the, the lights, Joe.
I totally appropriated money for the lights already.
Well, remember I went back to them and then they had a couple of questions, um, about how the cost. I, I remember you getting a quote. I know it's gonna go up in price, right?
Or, or the basketball court.
Yeah, the lights. They had a question about that and then a couple of members were asking if it would affect, the lighting would affect any of the homes. Which I don't think so because they're behind the build, they're behind the building.
And they got shrouds and stuff that go, no, so it might not be.
Could you get a quote again, Joe, when you have to light up the basketball court?
Yeah, sure.
I'd say in recreation, actually, I was at their meeting yesterday and they're, they're requesting lights as well. Recreation.
Well, part of the reason we felt that was for the adults to be able to use it as a little type of adult lights and stuff or.
They were even saying like they're picking up their kids and it's dark now. Yeah, so they're, they're asking for it.
I mean, that was always the plan, but it was really built, I mean, everything we built is for kids, but that was one of the things we were trying to say, which were even adults could use, so.
Yeah, so I, I would like to see it, you know.
Yeah.
I think there's enough trees there to develop that there to buffer a lot of the lights.
I, I went, I went.
I don't think a light without buffer could possibly hit a house back there.
Pretty far. And the way they direct lights now and help, yeah.
And like Bill, uh, Paul says, he was a buffer man. I, I don't, I don't see where any type of interference anybody. So.
They would do it?
Well, I, yeah, absolutely. Well, I would love to do it.
He's not get the prices.
So Joe, you get the quote for us for the next month?
From last year, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll save the electrician to get a quote.
Yeah, I mean.
And that would be funded under open space.
Yes. Yeah, we can go back with the quote, yeah.
Okay, sounds good.
Yeah, uh, anything else, Paul? Any other open spaces? No, that was it. A school district, they did, I don't know how they did this, but, uh, you know, they were cut five hundred and seventy-five thousand. They still introduced that eighteen million dollar budget. Uh, it's a two percent increase, you know, from the previous year. And, uh, so how they made up the difference, you know? I guess, uh, he's a miracle worker, but, uh, have you heard anything else? No, nothing else. So hopefully there's some good news coming down the pike. Um, some of them. And that's all I have.
Okay, right.
Um, yeah, recreation, booster, fire department, car show this Saturday, I think, what, eight o'clock, Joe? Cars start rolling?
Eight o'clock, yeah, with fire companies gonna be there seven to start blocking off things, so.
Okay.
Almost go eight to two?
Yes.
I think so.
I think that's what it was. Eight to two. Sure.
Doesn't have a date, uh, time on it. Oh, three, three P M awards. So, yeah, eight to two awards are at three. Recreation is gonna be grilling. Guess you guys are gonna be doing parking, fire department.
Parking and our grill rattle goes off at three o'clock also.
Yeah.
Thinking what, Joe, I want, I need someone who's tickets. I want.
Yeah, I like.
Every time I see her, I forget that.
So, yeah, that, that's about it. Joe, can you, do you want them to keep the garbage in the, the building until Monday? You guys can get it or do you want?
I think, I think fire company, we can bring it down.
Okay.
Well, we'll get it taken care of. So instead of getting that in there, it's, it isn't a big wrong time of year to keep that garbage inside.
Yeah, well, that's why I was asking. All right. And then they, the only other question they had, uh, was the bathrooms, but you're gonna be there anyways. They're gonna be unlocked and ready to go.
Yeah, well, the timers, the timers running on that, so they'll be, they'll be up till eight, eight P M.
Okay. I, uh, yeah, and just thank you for the fields. Everyone loves the, the work.
We have time with baseball this year.
I, uh.
Without having covers on them.
I know I drove a couple of days ago. I'm like driving by one seventy-three and I see Joe out there on Baby's, uh, just staring away at the fields, but, yeah, he's, the guys have done a great job. Really good, especially with the weather. I was just telling the mayor, like, high school, we get canceled every day. It, it rains, we, it takes two days just to have a game. So you guys have done a great job for that. Thank you.
Paul?
All right, so. And I don't, it was last meeting, Lisa, that Bob Edgerson was in here with a report from the environmental commission?
Uh, yes, I believe so.
Yeah, that's what I, Lisa, so I wanna follow up on, on something with those folks that they had a couple of things that we, they wanted us to look at, but one of the most immediate things, only because there was recently a email to the town, I believe maybe to you directly, and you might have shared it about folks over on Rickline, uh, getting a substantial ash and smell from the asphalt plant.
Yes, I did some of that, yeah.
And, and probably maybe eight to ten months prior to that, uh, some folks on North Main Street also seem to be sharing that same concern. Uh, and I had asked the environmental commission to kind of look into that because worn material because of its age of the plant and everything else like that, they're, they're not exactly governed by a lot of the new zero emission laws and things of that nature. And apparently they use a particulate system of filter. And, but it's uh, self-inspected. I think that's a problem. You know, I like, I don't know. Um, so I, I'm not quite sure. Uh, Bob said i- if somebody has a complaint, they should call the D E P and they'll send somebody up here to monitor the situation, but I, I think that there's probably a little bit more substance to it, and this is where I'm gonna ask Mike. Um, should is, should we just go ahead and make a phone call to them? And say, hey, we think there's a problem with.
I, I think, I think we should actually have him send a letter of co- making the complaint on behalf of our residents. Can we do that?
Yes, I mean, I understand even with the zero emission asphalt plant in Lowpack on township, there are days you will smell asphalt. Just be, a smell doesn't necessarily mean it's the non-compliant or whatever, you know? Um, but the particulate portion of the issue does become a problem because, again, that's a zero emission. There's no particulate up there. Why are we dealing with it down here? You know, and it's certainly affecting at least the Route fifty-seven corner. Um, so I would just, I'd like to seek information, be a D E P, worn material or whatever as to are they in compliance? Do we, because I had thought we could actually change their self-inspecting thing when I had a conversation with somebody not too long. Well, if we don't want them to self-inspect, we can create an ordinance or a resolution. I'm not sure which to change that. But I guess that would fall onto the D E P at that point.
Why don't we have Mike send a letter, a complaint on behalf of the residents? And ask for a meeting between Mike and you and Bob Edgerson and.
Sure.
I'll, I'll come, something. So we we want an investigation and we'd like to have a meeting with them to see what other actors we can take out of the municipality.
No, I think that's a good idea. And that way, at least you've given them the heads up that this is a concern and then if we have to go beyond that, at, at least we gave them the courtesy of letting them know that this is an issue. Because, because I, going back to the land use board, I mean, the placement of the solar field that they want to place there. Uh, they were also concerned about where it got put in perspective to the actual asphalt plan because of dust particulates. Yeah, so I think they're concerned about it on their own property. Uh, you know, I, I think maybe there's a red flag.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make the motion that we authorize the attorney to dig the.
And I will sign it, yep.
Any other questions? Roll call, Lisa.
Mayor Burson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?[1699.89]
Yes.
Mister Kenner?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
Is that it, Paul, you're done?
That's it, but Paul, is there any life expectancy on these old plants, you know, when this E P A, you know, they shut down nuclear plants, I know it's two different. I, I was talking about here, but you know.
I genuinely would have thought when the new one opened up that that way there'd been the death sentence for this one, but apparently the new one is catering to large projects and this one still caters to the locals with the driveways and such. They're not doing large, and it doesn't, and it doesn't seem to be slowing down anytime soon.
Is this owned by ancient place?
Yes, ancient, yeah, yeah.
Anything else? Professional reports, Mike's not here, Mike, you have, you have as an executive, right?
Yes, correct.
Mayor?
Yeah.
How about a Memorial Day parade update, what's the status with that? What was still, Joe? And what time do we set up?
Do you have any updates on it?
I don't know.
I know that the signs are up for the parade.
Lisa runs it and I usually try to find out a day before.
You say, um, what, ten o'clock?
Yeah, I think we got like nine fifteen, we meet up there and ten o'clock step.
Ten o'clock, it ends down here, you can march up to Thomas Stewart if you want, um, where the ceremonies are gonna be held. Um, but the official ending point is here.
Mayor Barson is gonna speak for them.
We're working on that, but.
Charlie's already.
I only have to do the welcome, I have to.
Right, right.
Okay, municipal complex bid up, rebid on day, whatever, where we at with all that?
Uh, well, the schedule has been set and advertised for, uh, the rebid. I included in my report, uh, all the vendors who had requested specs from Denny's so far, looks good. And we have a bid opening date of June fourth at ten A M. and a special meeting scheduled for June eleventh. To award, hopefully.
On, on June eleven?
Right.
Can we also do the, uh, budget on June eleven?
Start a meeting, just a bit of a.
Oh, oh, no, no, there's, there is a special.
Yeah, there's a special meeting for the bid, yeah, yeah.
Uh, yeah, it's been advertised for award of the bid, so.
Okay, that's it, okay, alright.
What do you want, off the bike to you on that, that meeting?
I would like to, because I'm not gonna be here on the.
What two mean?
Two. June four, ten A M., right, you said for the bid opening?
Uh, yes.
Okay, um, and I'm sure the four of you can. Okay, everybody good with the, the update on that building, any questions? Truck traffic, request for monitoring device Warren County, who put that on?
Well, again. I already asked you about it. It just makes me crazy. They shake my house morning, noon and night, uh, a resident told me that a couple of residents around me told me they can't even ride their bikes on the weekend even on and down our road because we also have ten-wheelers and they wanna know why all of a sudden we have so many trucks and I said, well, at one point Warren County came out and I didn't realize it, but they only put it on your road, that monitor.
Put it on South Main, didn't they? That's, it's been years since.
For a very short time and then it was.
Oh, you know what, actually, they said people out the counter one time about four, five minutes ago. I think during summer, he had like interns.
And one resident said, well, are they waiting for someone to get killed and then they'll do something, I'm like, well, we hope not, but we do address it quite often. I, I invite them to come to meetings, I don't see anyone here, but.
Listen, you should have.
It is a concern.
Maybe talk the finale, see if you can sell it to the county engineer and see requests. I think last time we asked, do you have enough monitors or something like?
That was it, I do remember that.
They put on the counter out?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they used to have so many counters and, yeah, it's the.
Yeah, I think you're right, I think their answer.
The summertime, a couple, a couple of years ago, the summer, I think they had summer camps. No, this is the, they were on, but they were actually out there.
Yeah, they usually count them to summer.
Yeah, so maybe, uh, maybe in that request, Lisa, if not a thing, if they have summer interns, they can do a, a survey again.
Yeah, thank you. Maybe they got those broken ones fixed.
Okay, anybody else, anything else on their whole business? New business? Looking for a motion to adopt resolution forty-six twenty-four redemption of tax name blocks twenty-three. About twenty-one, lot thirty, anybody make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second, any questions, comments, discussion, roll call?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenner?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to adopt resolution forty-seven twenty-four to, uh, cancellation of grants. And that, we received the money, everything's done to grant, that's why we're canceling it, correct? Anybody, does somebody make that motion?
I made the motion.
Anybody second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenner?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
Uh, looking for a motion to adopt resolution forty-eight twenty-four. Is it seven, it was supposed to be twenty-five?
Uh, would be forty-nine twenty-four, the second motion, um, resolution.
Okay, okay, I'm looking for a motion to adopt resolution forty-eight twenty-four, forty-nine twenty-four, refund of escrow for A T T, refund of escrow for Segme Cedar Lane.
I'll make that motion.
Anybody want a second?
What is Segme?
Yeah, I, I'm just curious too.
Is that a new street in town?
No.
Or a name of company?
I know, I've seen that. Company, it's three dates, probably all of you in this room, it's very old, so I don't know.
Roll call.
They have to ask for the money back, right, so they probably just really.
They get the letter from T D Bank and they send a letter back to us saying, you know, this project is canceled, we would like our money back, so.
Right, okay.
Uh, Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenner?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
Looking for a motion to second reading of orders one oh one, twenty twenty-four, nor is to revise and supplement chapter seven and title traffic subsection one, anybody wanna make a motion for the second reading?
I'll make the motion.
All second, all favor? I, I make the motion for a second, open a public hearing for a second, uh, reading for the orders one oh one, twenty twenty-four, nor is revise the traffic subsection, anybody want a second?
Second.
All favor?
Alright.
Anyone wishes to come up and make any comments about that ordinance, is welcome to come up.
Is it about the traffic?
It's about that specific ordinance.
Yeah.
Can you explain what do you mean, sir?
Are you here, you wanna make a comment about traffic?
I do.
Okay, yeah, if that's not, that, that's not now. That's not now, no, I'll let you know though, that I know that's what you wanna do. Okay, I'll make a motion, we close public hearing on where, all favor? Make a motion to adopt to where it's one oh one, twenty twenty-four.
I'll make the motion.
Roll call, Lisa?
Your second.
Uh, Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenner?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we open the public hearing on orders number one oh three, twenty twenty-four, the N J D E P M S four permit, anybody want a second?
Second.
All favor? Anyone wishes to come up and make any public comments regarding the orders regarding the M S P four report, M S four report permit? Seeing that I make a motion, we close, open the hearing on that, all favor? Looking for a motion to adopt the orders number one oh three, twenty twenty-four, anybody wanna make the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Any questions, comments, roll call, Lisa?
Mayor Barson?
Yes.
Mister Baylor?
Yes.
Mister Bean?
Yes.
Mister Kenner?
Yes.
Mister McDermott?
Yes.
I'll make a motion, we open public hearing on orders number one oh four, twenty twenty-four, Lawrence amending chapter sixteen zoning section, are we gonna do sort of?
I just talked to Mike and we will have to do that notice, so we'll have to hold it.
Okay, so I'm gonna do that, okay. Budget, we did it. I'm looking for a motion to authorize me a signed blue light permit for Thomas Mall, memory emergency squad, anybody want a second?
Second.
All favor?
Alright.
And, uh, anybody wanna talk about the oxen, Bill, that's usually you who bring that up.
Yeah, I was gonna ask Mike how, how they're doing over in Franklin, you know? And where do we stand with what we need to do to get that bond for, uh, the Hagerty property? So, where are we at with that, Lisa?
Uh, we haven't taken any action on that, we should probably, um, I think the amount that we were asking for, uh, they had anticipated would be low enough that we wouldn't require a lot of the bond council stuff, so maybe it's more of a conversation with John Mooney, just to get that.
Mike said that last time we were talking about it, they're, they're closer in Franklin, but they're not anywhere near ready to start.
I just don't wanna miss that.
No, I hear you.
Where we can get, if it's Montana or whoever, you know.
I have not yet received the, um, the contract from the D E P. They were working on it still, so.
Anybody have anything for your, about your new business?
Yeah.
Of course, fine, the only way, the, we gotta request them as residents on one seventy-three, but, uh, Mayor, I know Mike, I, I forwarded to you. What, what direction should we give those folks? I mean, I have no problem with it, but I don't think we have the authority to authorize it, so.
I don't think we do either, so, I mean, I have somebody checking on it, but I don't have an answer yet, so, you know.
Has anybody gotten back to those residents yet?
I just told them that we would look into it.
Okay, we just, um, we had a meeting, the attorneys reviewing and see, but I, I'm gonna guess even if the state says it's okay, then, like, who puts it up, like, is, is Verizon or J C P L gonna allow companies to go under toll, but I very gonna be complicated, it should be simple, I suspect it's gonna be complicated.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I make a motion, we have a public comment, second, all favor? And now, thank you for your time. Yeah, go out the phone and give your name and address and.
I'm Elizabeth Morbido, three twenty-eight Greenwood Street, here in Storizville. So my concern is about the traffic. You have talked about the eighteen wheels coming down the road and it's just like crazy because it's like, why are they down here, and also, we have speed zones, basically it's twenty-five miles an hour, these people go can't even get out of my parking lot, I can't get out of my, my driveway without trying, somebody hit me, and then because I have an R V, I mean, I understand, you know, you have to park your R V, but it's like people don't know how to slow down here. And then I understand we have, like, the office is working, but they're doing their job, but we gotta do something about the speed, because these people don't know how to slow down. And twenty-five miles an hour, I don't think they know what two-five means, I think they know what five-two means. So that's my concern about the traffic, so if you could fix that, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
Two thanks, I'm sorry, I missed it, under the, uh, municipal complex. I met with SCOTR reps and we're working on, have seen there's an excavator up there tonight to run the gas line, so between there and down here to D P W, we're trying to, to, uh, suffice that work for them. And the second, I met with, uh, Robert Santini, and he said just to have them, the D P W will mark out the construction site flag that out, so he won't plant no crop in that front area where the proposed building is gonna be. So those two items.
Yeah, Paul had mentioned site two, another site for parking would be West Street, we didn't give that a thought.
Well, West Avenue, well, see, what the, the concern was, they got some aggregate that they gotta backfill the pipe and stuff with. He said it was like three tandem loads each or triaxal loads, so, yeah, that's, that's twenty, twenty-one ton, twenty-two ton each truck load, so.
Right.
Uh, that's the select fill that needs to be there, and to get the equipment there somewhat quickly.
Right.
What, as you see, and one of them is a track excavator, which you ain't driving up and down the road.
Right.
Really.
Okay, thanks, Joe.
And Joe, you guys gonna easily enough mark out the municipal complex for?
Yeah, I have the map and stuff and I'll just scale it out, so, uh, that, and we'll just post some posts and flags out and along the whole line to the front section.
Okay, cool.
Because we have construction trailer plan and we got our topsoil, uh, depot site that has to be within there and we gotta follow what we gave the soil conservation, uh, on the map where we put that material.
Gary, Gary Hill, five twenty-nine North Main Street, Storizville, um, just to as a resident, thank you for your hard work with the budget itself, I know with the insurance streams, everything being increased dramatically, you guys obviously have your hands full with what you have to do, um, but actually just sitting here while you guys are taking care of a few other things, just to to answer Bill's comment that he made before about Deal, New Jersey, I did a little research on that, it's a beach community.
Oh, yeah, they, yeah, most.
Five hundred and seventy-one residents and their local revenue is only one point seven million dollars, but their total revenue for the year is almost fifteen million dollars. That's why the property taxes are so low.
Yeah.
And it might be something to do with the name Greenwood. On N J dot com, they list in Warren County, Greenwood Township is the highest tax. Bull'sburg is the lowest, but oddly enough, the other Greenwood Township and Cumberland County, they're also the one in their county. Maybe we should change our name now.
Thanks, Gary, anyone else? I make a motion to close public comment?
Second.
All favor? Chief, also to back up, she said, we forward the email to him, the, that we got about the speeding in town too. Someone's recommending speed bumps, but, you, you can't do speed bump, well, first of all, I have a road, a county road, it takes twenty-five years to do it.
Yeah, that comment didn't, I don't know where they live, they didn't, they said they live in Greenwood.
Yeah, they didn't say which street, but I mean, I, I'm not a big, I, I don't believe in speed bumps, they do call what they call, uh, calming zones now, calming effects.
Doesn't calm the rest.
No.
But, but, well, no, it's, it's where the road is set, like, you know, a bump would like bump the car, this, this has a calming effect where it goes up so the person feels it goes up and then it goes up for a while, then it's back down gradually, then you usually paint it a different color so that it draws, draws their attention, but that's usually in a crosswalk situation or something like that, not, not just on the street, but I mean, speed bumps are just a big liability to, to have, so, uh, but maybe if you forward to, maybe you just give them a call, see where they live at least, and offer them, uh, to run some radar in there or something, but, you see, I think the complaint though was basically similar to what this lady's saying is it's all over. I think the complaint is, which is probably true.
Yeah, he asked about our, our radar sign, our radar sign, it's, it's shot, um, yeah, I don't know.
I was just gonna ask that, you know, but, you know, wha- whatever happened to that, and which does it cost to get a new one, or can you borrow one?
That's what I put in my, uh, uh, large line items in the, uh, budget.
For like six years in a row?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I mixed it every year.
So, going back a few years when others sat up here, I believe they painted on Greenwood Street twenty-five miles an hour and big numbers. Uh, just past the blinking light, maybe a hundred yards.
Was it Washington Street?
Washington Street, yes. We do something like that, you know?
We did that years ago on, did we do that, was that, the county do that on North and South Main?
No, town paid for that.
That was on.
The town, the county gave the township permission, Main Street still has it, it wasn't replaced when we paved Washington Street, but we also increased the street signs, uh, the speed limit signs from the eighteen by twenty-fours, we went twenty-four by thirty-six. I don't know, so jumped out in front of them or whatever, but, uh, it seemed that didn't, didn't help much, but we could I could get the whole, the dead middle line striping and get a quote.
Yeah, I, I, I'd be open to that, you know?
Do you think it will make a difference?
I, I don't know if it'll make a difference, but, you know.
Because of the communities growing with the new residents that's gonna be coming in soon, the traffic's gonna get worse. And so just keep in mind, because you have a bunch of kids and adults that don't know how to respect the community the way we respect the community with the traffic, so with the new people coming in, we have to keep in mind their speed coming down our roads.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, a lot of the problems on Greenwood and Washington, that's people cotton squirrel.
Well, really, so is North and South Main Street.
But in the neighborhoods, it's always the residents, that's always, you know, is ironic, is the people complaining are the ones who actually speak in the neighborhoods.
Yeah, that's usually what I see, like, Green. When I.
But Greenwood is a cut through, people are going.
When I, I see it, I've, I've actually followed a couple, they, they pull them to the park, well, they're all Pennsylvania license plates and they got, they're for lacrosse or whatever.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a cut through or it's people that don't live in town.
Joe, what about signs, I've seen, you know, that have L E D around the signs, you know, and it flashes, you know?
Good, but you're talking probably thousands of them.
Right, right, I know.
Solar, solar panel.
Like almost two thousand bucks, my son.
Is there grants that we could apply for those? Do you think there's any grants out there that maybe we could apply for that?
Yeah, they're saying, they're expensive.
Uh, pro- I don't know if there's any grants, I really don't know, we tap the loan.
Actually, I just downloaded a transportation one that showed up in my email just today and I transferred it to the squad so I could read it, but it had stuff about transportation and, and things, so maybe there's something there. Maybe.
Maybe you get lucky.
Yeah, yeah.
I will, uh, I want to raise the, uh, trackers, mostly, uh, make pleasure here, uh, the center of town, so.
Okay, thanks, chief, thanks again.
Thank you, it's like I said, it's like coming out of the driveways, like, I, I'm from New York, I'm actually. It's just like, it's, it doesn't make sense.
Okay, okay, I'm looking for, anybody have anything else? Looking for a motion to go to the executive session, discuss personnel, contracts and very client privilege zoning and code enforcement.
I'll make that motion.